Yep, I'm here.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Rayanne, turn it over to Legal here.
Okay, so in discussing this with Mr. Bowie, we come up with a total sum of five hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars that are, that is owed to Mr. Bowie. And he would start resuming lease payments in the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred, beginning with the month of June. And so the question comes down to, can this be a lump sum payment, or does it have to be a payment plan?
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
I just have a question regarding the lease payment. Who agreed to the stoppage of the lease payments? Is that a full council decision? And did the council, which council or administration agree to the stoppage of the lease payments? Yes?
Cora and I worked out the agreement per the council back in February. And, and not making the lease payments was a part of that agreement to help pay for the nine hundred and seventy thousand that was owed.
So I guess that question would be our attorney, for our attorney, is that a full council decision for the lease payments to be stopped? Or can the treasurer make that decision for lease payments to be stopped?
Have my hand raised.
Treasurer, can you answer?
So, yeah. Cora, did you want to say?
Yes. It was approved by full council. That agreement was taken to council and it was approved. That was the original agreement. The council approved that. I didn't do that on my own. And then like a month later, after I made the first payment, then the council at a special meeting took action to stop the payments and stop the agreement. Then it was just bounced around and bounced around until it finally came back and now it's here.
Okay, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, Cora's correct. That's what we did as council. And so now it's in front of us because it came back to finance and we forwarded it to the tribal council. So I think with what Rayanne is saying, Cora, that is basically just starting a, she gave us the total amount that's owed, but also that this would just go back to a repayment plan, right? We'll just start paying every month or what we agreed on.
Sugar will melt into the cream cheese.
We can do that, or since it's five, what, five fifty?
Yeah, five fifty, four thirty. Oh, eight thirty, five hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
We could do that in two payments.
Are you okay with that? Okay, he's okay with that. And I think the motion, and I second it.
Okay.
Secretary, call for the vote.
Next, you can flip the lower rack over the water pan.
And mute your mic?
January Goldsberg?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly? Tyler Lunderman?
Of Stane.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bo Little White Man?
No.
David Poyer?
No.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
No.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little, oh, sorry, Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah. No.
B. Frandl?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Eight yes, ten no, one not voting, motion failed.
That's, that's all we have for Finance Chair.
So, am I just out that money, or what? Not quite understanding, I mean.
I think that has to go back to Finance Committee. And to find out, or to discuss options, I guess. Go ahead, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
You held our our payment, but you were paying it back, right? As part of the, what we just negotiated?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Okay, what? What was the, maybe you could explain a little bit about the that payment negotiation we just did? What did that cover? Because I know he held, we held off, or he held off on paying us the rent for those three months.
Okay, so my understanding, just from the brief discussion that we had, there was a payment plan that was passed in February. That's what he was working off of. And there was a one payment out of that payment plan made in the amount of two hundred and three thousand plus. And then there were some, I think it was four more additional payments that were supposed to be made. But council stopped that action, so the lease payments were not made and for the months of the past four months, including me. So, in looking at what is left owed to Mr. Bowie from the total that was submitted back in February of over nine hundred and thirty thousand, subtracting the lease withholdings, the total comes up to now, after the first initial payment that was made in two, of the two hundred and three thousand plus, the total amount left owed is five thousand fifty eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And so, if that could be paid to Mr. Bowie, my understanding is the treasurer just said that can be made in two payments. And then he would resume the lease payments of fifty-two thousand five hundred beginning in June. So that was what we discussed, and that's what you guys voted no for. You just, the motion failed. So now we're left with, what do we do? Because Mr. Bowie is still owed some money. So what does council want to do? Do you want to refer it back to Finance Committee to to renegotiate, or I don't know what you want to do. It's up to you guys.
I think that at this time, you know, I do know that we do owe him. And it's really hard because we're put in this position to make a decision on this issue. And bottom line is, we still owe him. And I think our treasurer said it before, is that, you know, we need to start paying these bills. And so I think sometimes, you know, I know council is, you know, they're not going to question nobody's vote or anything, but you know, I think that we need to think that of what we owe, but I also want to say that Mr. Bowie needs to pay our lease payments for the last three months. I think you didn't, you didn't make any payments to us?
That was part of the agreement, that lease payments would not be paid.
But then now today, you're going to make the payment to us in beginning of June.
If, if, if I'm going to get paid, I am, yes.
If this is paid off, then you'll make your start in June, you'll be, are you going to give us the payments from the last months that you owed us?
Those were already subtracted out of the total. That's where that five hundred and five hundred and fifty thousand came from.
Okay.
So the balance, the balance is, is this, and so I, I guess I'm, I, I brought council, I brought Finance Committee what they wanted with invoices. Gave them everything. I, I've had, you know, a couple of you that have voted no, that have told me this bill was going to get paid, so I'm just failing to understand what's, what's going to change? What's different?
Councilman Greenwald.
Yeah, Chair. I know, I know you guys came in here and it was, it was really hard to understand all the stuff that went on with this whole situation. At the end of the day, it's bad business practice to do what we're doing now. And as the word spreads through business to business to business, pretty soon, nobody's going to ever want to come here. You're not going to want to do business with our tribe. They're not going to want to give us credit. Because a lot of our tribal, our small business owners require credit sometimes. If it's a lumberyard, you require credit from a big lumber company to bring in the lumber and then you pay as you go. But if we keep doing what we do, how we do it, nobody's going to want to come here no more. Nobody's going to give a loan to one of our small business owners or anything. We might not like it, but we owe the money what was spent on this program, whether we liked it or not, whether we agreed with it or not, we still owed the money. And to, to continue to just push him back, push him back. I remember that agreement that if this wasn't paid, then it was going to have to start coming out of the monthly lease agreement, would have to start coming out of that, so he could recoup his money. But we've been getting a lot of rain the last few days. And there's something with that roof in our building there. And it's probably on its last leg, and there's, I know I talked to some council reps in here on that, and he's willing to try to work on that roof and get things done that we can't do right now. But if we keep on going around and around like this, it's just going to make it harder. Maybe that roof might not last very much longer, then we're going to be stuck with the building with no roof on it. If it collapses in on some of our relatives that go to the store and use it. Or if, I don't know how far, what's your last assessment of the roof was there, and that, especially in a couple areas that were pretty bad. I don't know if you've been having to put mott buckets up all over the place to capture some of the rain that you've had over the last week. But I think as a council, we should be able to come together, sit down as adults and figure this out, you know, so that I was waiting for our treasurer. Our treasurer said, let's move forward. That's all I'm waiting for. I got her answer today, so I was ready to move forward, but I'd like to report on that roof to RF, where we're at with that right now.
Councilman Standing Soldier.
I kind of look at this as we did something, RF did something, it's tit for tat. You know, when we said no, we're not paying it, then he removes the hamburger. And it's little things. It's not a major thing. It's just little things. But it shows our respect for one another. You know, and the people that buy from you and purchase everything for you, and make a living for you on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation are all natives. All natives. Yet, to take their hamburger, which is again, a small thing, but they look forward to it, to take their cards, they look forward to it, to quit cash and checks, they look forward to it. So, we pay this off and we cancel our lease with you, whenever we find someone to take your spot, then I think we'll all be even. I think everything will be even. So, when it goes back to finance, you know, I'll vote to pay you off. That's the honorable thing to do. It is our bill. Though I don't know how it is our bill, but I'm just accepting the fact that it is our bill from the summer food program. The state wrangled us into this program and they tricked us into doing this. They knew that we would fail. They knew that. But that's another subject altogether. But I guess we will, well, I will help to pay you off. You'll smile again, and everything will be peachy keen. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stand Soldier, with all due respect, canceling, canceling that burger and the elder cards was not a punishment. When you don't have the money.
I guess I wasn't asking for a response. I guess I wasn't.
Treasurer, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a hard time finding that mute button. You know, we, we do owe the bill. So I think we need to pay it and move on and whatever the council decides. But I honestly believe that in this time period that we were not allowed to have charge accounts or anything that our tribal programs, they figured things out. They went other places. Because that's what they do. They're resilient. They figure things out. And you know that roof? It was already RFP'd. And I'm not sure when the work is supposed to start. I think they said after the rain. Because they can't do it during the rain. But I'll find out from, for sure from Chuck and let you guys know when it will start. But I think we need to just pay the bill and get it done with now. This is dragging on way, way too long.
Right. Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
Earlier, the treasurer reported that the Resource Office was going to have to come to a halt because we were reaching the, reaching a cap at providing assistance to our community members. But now we have the funding to pay Mr. Bowie. So I'm confused at where the funding is coming from to be able to pay Mr. Bowie, but not have the ability to provide resources to our community members. And I hate the idea of utilizing, and no disrespect to my colleague, who I work very well with, Councilman Greenwald, but when we use poor business practices are going to be used against us when it wasn't our poor business practices that brought us into this situation. Because I think that our business owners on the reservation are excellent, and, and they, they are very resourceful and do very well in what they do, and I, and I hope and I pray that this doesn't affect them moving into the future. And I don't believe it will affect them. I think this is a bump in the road, and what happened in the past will not affect us moving forward. Because contracting with RF Bowie was a startup for, for us to set us up in a way for our own local business, our own local business owners to eventually move into that grocery store and be able to manage it themselves. However, we did, I believe they re-contracted again and extended the term with RF Bowie. So we do have some time with Mr. Bowie. And however we pay for this, I just, my question was that legally, it should have been the council that agreed to the stop payment of the, the lease. And if initially, we agreed to it, but then we went and put a stop to it until we received the documentation, it should have stopped. And that's why it just looks as if the decisions that we make in this circle are not being respected in that manner. Not to say that we're not going to pay you. You know, we want to work hand in hand. And so if it comes off as, well, I'm going to take the money that's owed to me against what the council decides, it comes off as a, as a disrespect. And maybe in finance, we do need to hash that out and discuss how we're going to work mutually together in paying you back, but also being able to take care of our community members. I think that's how we need to discuss it, because I'm just confused that we were reported that we didn't have the funding to meet the needs in the Resource Office, but now we have the funding to be able to pay you? That's where I'm, I'm left at. So we need to discuss that in finance to understand where, how is this money? And where's this money coming from to be able to pay that? Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Standing Soldier.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to send this all back to Finance, where Bowie will be in a meeting, and also the treasurer, as well as our attorneys, so we could iron it out once and for all, and then settle it, and then move on into summer without this on our shoulders. So that would be my motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Standing Soldier. Second by Councilman Randall. Secretary, call for the vote.
January Goldsberg?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Not voting.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
No.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Fifteen yes, two no, two not voting, motion carried. Okay, moving on. Chair was added?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda, agenda item, HHS, I believe has no agenda items submitted. So we'll move on to Land Committee, our next agenda item, and I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Resolution, Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe, amending resolution number twenty-five dash forty-three, which made the Badlands Bombing Range Program a standalone program of the Ogallawasoo Tribe. We'll move down to the fourth, whereas, whereas, whereas Article Four, Section I, T of the Ogallawasoo Tribe authorized the tribal council the power to delegate and to subordinate boards and offices, any of the enumerated powers of Article Four, Section I, reserving the right to review an action taken on virtue of such delegated power. Whereas Ogallawasoo Tribe established the Badlands Bombing Range Program to clean up military debris on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and that the program is within the Ogallawasoo Tribe Natural Resources Department. And whereas by resolution twenty-five forty-three, Ogallawasoo Tribe, Ogallawasoo Tribal Council removed the Badlands Bombing Range Program from Ogallawasoo Tribe's Natural Resource Department and made it a standalone program of Ogallawasoo, of the tribe. Whereas on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Land and Natural Resources Committee recommended amending resolution number twenty-five forty-three to clarify that the Director of the Badlands Bombing Range Program shall be under the supervision of the Chief of Staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council hereby amends resolution twenty-five forty, forty-three to clarify that the Badlands Bombing Range Program is a standalone program of the tribe that the Badlands Bombing Range Program shall report to the tribal council that that the bombing, or the Badlands Bombing Range Program shall be under the oversight of the Land, the Natural Resources Committee of Ogallawasoo Tribe, and that the Director of the Badlands Bombing Range Program shall be under the supervision of the Chief of Staff. The reason we're changing this, it said that the Land and Natural Resources Committee was the supervisor. We're, we're not the supervisor. So we're putting the Chief of Staff as the supervisor. Motion.
A motion by Councilman Poyer. Second by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
January Goldsberg?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer? Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
James Cross? Craig Dillon? Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Nineteen unanimous, motion carried.
The next one, we have, some might wonder why the Land Committee has it. HHS was supposed to meet after the Land Committee last Monday, but they didn't have one, so IHS brought it to the Land Committee. Resolution, the second one, that's the one I mentioned when we first started, about the downtown reconstruction project? That, it was in writing, that's taken off the agenda. So we'll go to number three. Resolution, Ogallawasoo Tribal Council approving the contract with American Engineering Testing for Investigation at the Ogallala Lagoon on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and skip down to the fourth, whereas whereas in the bid vetting and the evaluate, evaluation conducted under the MOA and involving the tribal water and sewer program and the Indian, Indian Health Service, three bids. Three bids were received with, with the low apparent, apparent bid submitted by American Engineering Testing. Whereas on the nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five, the land and natural resources committee. Of the tribal council met and voted to refer the final approval of the contract with American Eng. Engineering Testing onto the full tribal council and whereas the tribal council has considered the matter and. Determined that is in the best interest of the tribe and its members to approve the contract with American Engineering Testing. For the investigation at the Ogallala Lagoon. Now therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe does hereby. Approve the contract with American Engineering Testing for the investigation at the Ogallala Lagoon in the amount of. Ten thousand four hundred dollars. And be it further resolved that the tribal council understands that in the event American Engineering Testing does not obtain. Adequate bonding as required in the project within ten days of the receipt of this notice. With this approval of the project will be rebid. And be it further resolved that the Ogallawasoo Tribal President. In his absence, the Vice President hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to execute this contract. I saw move.
I've got a question here. Was that a motion also?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, motion.
So Davy, is this a proven big bats um? Or is it just to move forward a bit?
What?
On the third one, the Ogallala Lagoon.
Oh, the third one.
I thought I mentioned that.
Oh, sorry.
I, I guess what's happening, the Ogallala Lagoon is in need of repair and these guys are gonna come in and test. I don't see. IHS is here, I mean, they're not here. They was here, but they're gone.
Yeah, the engineer was here before lunch.
I'm online if you need me.
Oh, oh.
Oh, there he is.
You wanna explain a little bit about what's going on at the Ogallala Lagoon so the rest could hear it?
Absolutely, thank you. The uh, current lagoon doesn't hold water as long as it's supposed to. Uh, we'd like to hire this firm to do some geotechnical testing to better determine exactly what we need to do to. To repair the situation.
Thank you.
Councilman Dillon. Oh, you second, okay. So we gotta second on that motion? Yeah. Call for the vote.
Donary Goldsberg.
Yes, yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Uh.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Beef Randall.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Troy Little.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Nineteen unanimous motion carried.
Resolution, Ogallawasoo Tribe Council approving Paul Reed Construction and Supply Inc. Contract change order number one to add work for the construction of the Pine Ridge. Water main crossing upgrade contract, PR two zero two four dash CW dash two. Skip down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Health and Human Services Committee. HHS Committee is standing committee of, of the, of the tribal council that oversees Indian Health Service. IHS Martin Sanitation Facility Construction Contracts and whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe's Water. And Water and Sewer Company requires approval of a change order and contract modification to add. Additional work to the construction of PR two zero two four. CW two between the Ogallawasoo Tribe and Paul Reed Construction and Supply Inc. And whereas on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Ogallawasoo Tribe. Land and Natural Resources Committee met regu- during a regular session and approved the change order. To add the work to the contract. Change order number one will be an increased contract. PR two zero two four CW two by a total of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents. From the one point nine. Nine hundred twenty-one, one million nine hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. To one million nine hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-nine ninety-nine cents. No additional time is requested. Therefore be resolved that the Ogallawas- that the tribal council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe has voted to approve the contract change order. For Paul Reed Construction and Supply Inc. to add to work of the Pine Ridge. Main Water Highway Crossing Upgrade Contract, PR two zero two four CW two. An increase to contract total by thirty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents. From one million nine hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents to. One million nine hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-nine ninety-nine cents. Be it further resolved of the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary. Necessary to execute contract change order number one. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Poyer. Second by Councilman Spotted Bear. Call for the vote.
Donary Goldsberg.
Yes.
Anna, Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Uh.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Beef Randall.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Nineteen unanimous motion carried.
Thank you, Council. So we have during for regular.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, next agenda item, Law and Order Committee, I'm gonna turn it over to the chair.
Uh, thank you. Chairman, um. The first item that is on the agenda is the Perry Win Casino. A shorty, can we uh, get you to come up? So um. We made motions to uh, have Title Thirty-One reinstated. Both in Law and Order and in um, EBND. And it hasn't happened yet, so um, I was wondering why.
Uh, Title Thirty-One was never taken out, it's still there. We're still uh, treat, uh, teaching the Title Thirty-One in the morning at that. So it's still there, it was never taken out, just a couple positions.
Well, the motion was to reinstate the uh, two employees that were let go.
Haven't seen him.
In EBND, um, that motion was to reinstate um, Ms. Cooney and. Um. Uh, forgot her last name. Yeah, Ms. Whiskey Chan.
Chair, I'm, we're naming names, do you think we should go on executive over this issue?
I, I can't hear you.
Uh?
I didn't hear you say it again.
We're naming names, so do you think we need to go on executive?
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't be discussing names. I couldn't uh, hear you clearly down there. So is that what you wanna do?
Yes.
Uh, go in the executive?
Office be the name and names, yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, so, okay, motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilman Goldsberg, go into executive. Due to uh, s- sensitive information. Secretary, call for the vote.
Donary Goldsberg.
Yeah, yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Tyler Londonman. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Uh.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer. Ju- Julianne Spotted Bear. No. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Beef Randall.
Yes.
James Cross. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Chair, would that, could we just have Shorty in here? Just Shorty with them?
Okay, yes, you can stay. Fourteen yes, three no, one not voting. So at this time, we're, it, we'll go into executive at four thirty-five. Sergeant Arms.